Okay, moving on in public hearings. Item number five is 685 Broadway. It's a special permit renewal for auto sales and repairs. Section block and lot is 56.92-3-21. Secret determination, zone C2. It's in the heritage area, Ward 4. Dago A. Maratz is the applicant owner.
Do we want to do item number six with this one too?
Yeah.
We're also going to couple item number six with this as well. This is 12-14 Franklin Street. Special permit for parking lot for an existing auto repair and auto sales. Section block and lot for that is 56.92-3-21. Secret determination, zone C2, heritage area as well. Ward 4. Dago A. Maratz is the applicant. Dago A. Maratz and Verk Convenience Mart Incorporated are the owners. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number five or six? Okay. Mr. Maratz, you want to come up?
Can you just push the button on the microphone?
There you go.
Okay, let the record show that Mr. Maratz is here. How are you?
I'm all right. Living in.
All right. Um, all right, so we have, uh, we'll do the 685 Broadway first. All right, so the last, the original permit was issued in May of 2004 for auto repairs. And in 2005, the permit was expanded to include auto sales. Are you still selling autos there, are you?
Yes.
And the most recent renewal was in April 2015 for a period of two years.
Correct.
Okay. Now, last time, well, in the July meeting, we were discussing the food truck.
Correct.
And how that affected the property. At that time, you said there was not a problem with vehicles getting around in through the property.
Correct.
Um, I, I, I'm going to disagree with that on it, with you on that. I mean, it's, it's really tight there where you're up against the sidewalk for the building itself. Um, I, in my personal opinion, I think that you should have that bit, that food truck and that porch some, maybe you put it over in the parking lot that you were, we're going to talk about here as part of this. But I think that, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think that that takes away from parking spots on your property as well as obstructs vehicular traffic through the, through the area. So, um, I don't know if anybody else thinks about that.
I can get a truck and that space around.
It's tight.
I can still move it, maybe like five foot if I have to, um, push it that way.
It also takes up parking spaces that...
Yeah, we already...
It also takes up parking spaces for the business.
Well, I, that's why I apply on the other parking lot.
So, I think that we can, if we can get this all together, um, to where everybody's satisfied with it, if we can get that food truck maybe moved over to that parking lot.
I can't move the food truck.
What's that?
I can't move it, the other parking lot, I don't move the other parking lot.
I mean...
I understand that you guys, probably somebody don't like the way it looks, but, I mean, it's, I can, I can probably knock down the one piece and make a space there. Now, I have the other parking lot across the street, which I got plenty of parking for my cars. If you go in the daylight, I can't have the food truck stink. Everybody piss in the other, they poop in the other, I mean, I can't have people eating on the other side. That's one of the reasons, it's not the best parking lot. I gotta chase those guys, the drug artists every single day. So, it's, it's like, it's, it's disgusting. I mean, the parking lot is not really the best place.
Who owns the parking? I guess I'm trying to figure out, he was here in July. What's happened between July and now?
The parking lot is owned by the Verk Convenience Store. He is leasing that parking lot.
Yes.
And we see parking one and parking two. That's both leased?
Both, yes. Me, I got plenty of parking for my customer cars and I don't really do a lot of sales. I got like three, four cars, like right now, I don't have nothing. So, most like I need it for customers, parking lot. In a year, I sell probably like 10 cars. So, it's not like I really do a lot of sales.
Do you sell cars off of that parking lot?
No.
Okay, because if you, if you have plans to do that, you're going to need to get a variance for that.
No. I use it just to park my customer cars, that's what I need it for.
And also, there seems to be, um, storage of some vehicles there that, for, for quite a long period of time. Is there vehicles stored there for parts for anything?
No, 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 it's everything, uh, it's a driveway.
And, um, we also have reports of, uh, vehicle repairs being made on the sidewalk.
Oh, no, 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 I got a, I got a big garage, I, I, you know, I don't need to do that.
The food truck, is this one vehicle or two vehicles or connections or what?
It's one vehicle.
Yeah, it's a motor vehicle with a Brad's Barn type shed parked up right against it.
But what is that?
What is, what is the, what is that shed that's parked next to, what is that used for?
It's a trailer.
What, what is it used for though? What do you...
Uh, my wife uses it for storage to keep stuff inside.
For the food, for the food?
Yes, for the food, yeah.
Is that something she's in on a daily basis or...
What do we...
I mean, does she need that shed every day to be in and out?
Yes, yes, yes.
You never approved that being on the site.
The food truck and the shed was never approved as part of the site, the special permit for that, no?
I will say, I went, I went by the site today and the, there was a vehicle parked on the sidewalk and someone was working on it outside of the 685 Broadway. It was on the Franklin Street side.
When today?
Today.
Today? I don't know, I wasn't even there today, but, uh, with the call, no way. We don't, we don't work on the side, no.
Somebody was doing that actively?
Probably jumping car, the dairy, probably, I don't know.
Okay.
You know, it was, I guess, my lucky day or something, but, no, we don't, we don't work outside at all.
Was technically, um, obstructing the pedestrian sidewalk area by the way it was parked on the sidewalk and doing the work on the sidewalk area.
No, at all. I don't, I don't, with the call, no.
Okay.
No, no.
I mean, that's where I am with the food truck. I, I mean, I don't want to, I know you, you got a good business going there, probably what your wife does with the food truck, but I just think, you know, personally, I think it, first of all, it was not approved, this, which is why you're here today for this. But I think that it would, it would be better if it was put either out on the street or I, or in the parking lot that you're, um, have you, are you in contract already with, with the Convenience Mart to have that, for that lot? You're, you have a signed agreement?
I got an note, I mean, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Um, I just think it would be better if it was off that property. That's, I mean, I don't know, can toss it around to the rest of the board?
I have to say, this is, issue's a little muddled for me. I'm not quite sure what we're trying to approve here and what is allowed per se. I mean, is the food truck allowed to be operating the way he's operating it? He's allowed to do that, but how does that affect his special permit?
Well, in my, in my view, the special permit, um, he submitted a layout of the property for parking spots.
But I also submitted a layout for, for, for that small spot I was using there to use on the other parking lot.
I think if the food truck was there by itself without that shed, I'd say have at it myself.
I take it off.
I mean, I think that having both of those together there, um, really, and I know we're going to disagree on this about how traffic can get through there, but it is narrow there and I, you know...
Well, that's, that's where my wife got there, you know, moving the other side, she, she knows it's not going to get no, no sales.
Maybe you, maybe you keep the food, the, the storage shed on, on the parking lot, you know, on Franklin Street, but I think having those two together there, um, one of the, one of those things has to go and I think that the, you know, the food truck should stay. I mean, that's...
I, yeah, that we can, yeah.
And, because technically, it would be occupying a parking spot that was already approved on your previous, you know, um, the original special, the special permit, right? It's occupying a, a parking spot. Um, I just think there's a lot going on with both of those, both of those being in operation at the same time.
What, what does the leased lot have to do with his special permit?
Basically pushing parking spots that are required for the main building across the street in order to meet the parking requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's why I have the other parking lot across the street to recompense those, what, four parking space? That's what I'm using, but I'm using the other across the street to park the cars. I don't see really a big situation with the two, uh, two things over there.
The, the cars in the leased lot are the ones waiting to be worked on in the shop or...
I mean, if you tell me that it's something illegal to have both of them there, you know, that would change, but, uh, let's say that I'm not conducting business, right? My wife, we about to go, we're going to be closing in, three months, we close, we're gone. We're going to leave everything there. So, if she doesn't conduct any business still inside my property, I don't really care about two, three parking space, because I got big parking lot across the street, I can use it to park customer car. So, what I see here, everybody trying to push her food truck with the other thing outside there, why, what's the reason? I don't understand why. I mean...
It, it's a lot happening on a small piece of property.
It's a lot happening in Kingston, I know it's a lot of money coming from outside, a lot of people coming in best and now things doesn't look the way it was before. That's what I see.
Offhand, I, I don't even know, without even talking to the, to the, to building safety or the zoning enforcement officer.
Building safety, they send me building safety, they send me, um, health department, they send me everybody. So, the only thing I haven't get is DC. They send me everybody, they try, everybody already to kick me out with the food truck and the other one.
I just think...
I mean, if you tell me it's something illegal, okay, let's, you know...
I just think it's a lot happening for a small piece of, of small parcel.
It's, I got plenty parking, like I said, the amount it was, that I'm using here, there, I'm using on the other side. I'm killing four cars. That's, it's a, it's a 10, it's a 10 by 20. That's the amount I use on both of them.
So, the leased lot is for customers that are waiting their cars are parked there to be worked on or that's just in, customers for the food truck?
Across, no, across the street, I only use it to, for my customer cars. I don't work there, I don't do nothing. Like I say, I got a garage with two bays, I don't need space outside for work, yeah.
So, there, there will not be any sales on the Franklin Street?
No, no, no.
Property?
No, no.
And it is temporary?
That's what I'm applying for permit. If, this is in case if I have, like I say, I don't, I don't do a lot of sales, so I don't really, I don't even care about the used cars.
What, what is the term of the lease? What's the length of time?
It's term of what?
The length of time for your lease on that lot.
I got it, uh, the terms, I don't understand you.
When, when does the lease expire? How many years are you in agreement with?
Oh, it's, uh, three years, yes.
So, I, I, I'm not sure of what the rules for food trucks are, so, is, if a food truck is in a permanent spot, is it a restaurant or is it a food truck?
It, it's a food truck, it's...
And I'm sorry, let me, let me tell you, I move the food truck too, it's not like it's there all the time. I move it, because we do a lot of business outside too.
They're most of the time, but it does go other places?
Yes, yes.
So, that's what I'm trying to clarify, I was not, not, I was, that's what I'm trying to clarify. I was just very confused about what exactly we were approving here.
I'm okay with the food truck being there. I'm just, you know, the, the lot and bulk requirements, I mean, there's a, there's a lot going on there for the size of that, of that property.
So, if we decide that it's too busy, it won't be because you can't sell food from there, it'll be because there's too much going on in the lot?
I'm, I would, I would, my, my comments here were, if the storage trailer was situated on another parcel, that, that's, I'm good, I'm, I'm, I mean, I don't, that's, that's how I feel. We can put that on the, on, you know, on the parking lot on Franklin Street and the food truck can stay and operate, that's, I mean, that's, I'm okay with the food truck. I hope I'm not giving you an, the, the, that idea that I'm not. I'm just, there's a lot going on in that property and, uh, you're a good businessman, I know you, the fact that you got a lot of cars going in and out of there means, tells me you must be good at your, at what you do.
That's, I'm very surprised with the planning board too. I mean, I've been in business for 14 years and, uh, I mean, this is actually the first time where I'm getting hard time to get those permits renewed.
Well, we were, we've been waiting for these years for you to show up here to speak and talk.
14 years.
Well, you know, we didn't want to, we wanted to wait for yours, when your special permit renewal came up and then now we're, and that's what we're talking about now. So, I, I want your food truck to stay, I just think that the storage trailer could be put on another, but across the street. That's, that's all I'm saying, right?
Yeah, because in the, in the past, it was easy, you know, it was same every year or same every time it came up.
Yeah.
No problems, but now there's a substantial change.
And that's just me, like, the rest of the board, I, I don't make the decisions. You know, the, the board has to do this as a whole, so I don't know what the...
I can, uh, I can tell, I can make it like five foot, I can knock that shade like this and...
Can you, can you move the trailer to, across the street? Do that, do that for us, can you? Come on.
I, let me...
What do you think? You want to come up here and, he's putting it all on you right now.
That's, see, the problem is, I'm here for her, I'm here for her. She only want to be there like two years, that's it.
Well, now give her some room inside the building for her stuff and put your stuff across the street and let your guys run across the street.
Can you come up to the...
Yeah, come on, come on up.
We're friendly.
Yeah.
Or maybe I can move my food truck on Broadway and I stay over here? If you want it, I can move it and park it over there.
And keep the, yeah, and keep, uh...
On Broadway Street.
And keep the trailer on the site?
Yeah.
On, on the street.
On the street, yeah.
On the street, yeah.
You're going to have to pay the parking meter.
I don't know if you have problem with, uh, the bicycles, uh, area, I don't know.
No, there's no bicycle area, so, but yeah, we, we can legal park on the street also.
Yeah.
It's registered, it's got all the insurance.
Because I got all my permits.
The only thing about that is that the planning board's not in charge of parking on the street?
It don't, well, I can pay the meter, that's not a problem, it's a parking meter, so that's, that's not really...
I mean, I know there's other food trucks around town that are parked on the street.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned with what's on the site and I don't know, can you move that trailer so it's not taking up a bunch of spots, so we can get that maybe off to one side to, what, keep, I don't know?
Yeah.
And put the food truck on the street?
Yeah, we'll put the food truck on the street and we'll keep the trailer.
And the truck is...
At night, the food truck's just going to come back on site, so what's the point? Well, at the end of the day, what's the point?
Well, I think it has to be one or the other, either the food truck or the trailer on the site.
My thing is a trailer should go, the food truck should stay. That's, I'm, I'm with Wayne on that.
Because I, I don't, I don't want to hurt their business. If they're doing good business from the food truck and they're making money, I, I'm all for that, I don't want to, I don't want to stop them from making money off the food truck.
I don't either, it's just, again, this site is getting more and more and more and more put on it.
Seems a little bit crowded the way it is.
Very crowded.
Put the food truck on, on Broadway and we keep, uh, I'm cool with that.
So, if the board can't tell you that it's okay to put the food truck on Broadway, so you can't make the plan for putting it on Broadway, then that's not up to this board, it's up to PD whether or not they're telling you to postpone.
You're getting one or the other, so if you put the food truck on Broadway, then the food truck's got to get parked over on Franklin Street at night. It can't come back on the property, because then you're left with two items. Something's got to go.
Can you do that?
Yeah, we'll put the food truck outside.
On Franklin, at, at the end of the night, would they take it off?
Oh, yeah.
But it doesn't matter to us where he puts it as long as it's on the site.
Yeah, just as long as both of them are not on the site at the same time.
I get it, you don't want in a, you don't want in a property, yes.
Is, okay, is everybody good with that? Chuck? We get one of those things off the property, that's what we're doing. Okay, all right.
If it gets put back by the property, it's off the...
Well, we'll, we'll, we get them on building safety under that. If they violate the terms of the special permit, then, you know...
But they said a shed, that's, they should have got a building permit for that.
Well...
That's building and safety though, that's up to them to...
Charlie, that's, I, I'm going to plan it to move that anyway.
Okay.
So, just to make sure, so, I think to park a food truck on a street, you either
have to go through the city parks office or the police department? I think it's...
It's the police.
It's the police, yeah.
Yeah.
So, if you have a problem, well, they park one by Academy Green.
Right.
So, if you want to change the plan afterwards...
I don't know if you know this, uh, a couple years before, there was a guy with the tackle, that with the, with the trailer.
His part.
Legally, he had to get permission from my side, because, um, he was in a part of my business. So, he was parked over there all the time, so that's, you know, all he got to get, I think is a permit from, from the, uh, police department.
So, what you're agreeing to then is to remove the food truck, is what you're telling us?
Okay. Is anything else jumping out at staff with that site?
No.
Okay, so that's...
So, the parking lot, the Franklin Street parking lot?
We're going to talk about that now.
Is just for temporary parking, no vehicle?
We're, we're going to get into some terms of that now, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you. So, we'll talk about the Franklin Street parking lot now, okay? So, we're not going to have sales going on there, right? We're not, there's no car sales going on and if there is, if you want that, you're going to...
I apply for sales.
No, for Franklin Street, for the Franklin Street lot?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the new, uh, a new...
Okay. So, what is that? I'm not, I was unaware of that.
Special permit, yeah, it is listed.
Oh, okay. So, that doesn't require...
Special permit.
And the, what, the, the, what is it? The certification that you have for vehicle sales at Frank, at Broadway will be over on there too? You're going to include that? Because you have to have a, right, he's got to have the, the shingle up for sales, right?
Yes, he does.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That, so, the sales, will the state look at, you got to get two different approvals from the state for that or is it, can all be on one? What do you got to do?
All one.
Okay, we're just going to need proof of that as well for that site, that, that'll be included, okay? That you have permission from the state to do that as well. So, that's, we just need that, um, documentation, okay?
The temporary parking will be okay until he proves otherwise, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, he can have parking on that site.
Parking, right, but not, not sales.
Not long-term parking, but for...
Not, not long-term or sales until he, he said he applied, right?
Yeah.
So, okay.
And, uh, we're also going to include in there, and we've already, we've already talked about it, no vehicle repairs are going to occur on that lot, right? Is, and that, I haven't been over there, is that striped? It's all striped right now, ready to go? Did you have?
I don't think it is.
Okay.
I move a lot of them.
Okay.
So, are we going to include the food truck in that? Because I just have a tenth feeling the food truck's heading that way.
We should, we should do item five first?
No, I'm just saying, the, the food truck's going to be parked there overnight.
Oh, yeah, my food truck, yeah.
So, should we add the food truck to that parking?
1214, when it's, nope, I can't repark it. I got to find a partner. Why get a TV?
But I was thinking, so, we might as well include the food truck on Franklin Street and call it a day.
1214 and a big parking lot, uh, they're going to be parking over there.
We're getting, we're getting all this stuff in the, uh...
I can park, I can park like, what, like 30 cars over there, so I don't see...
Okay.
Now, remember, I got two lots on that side.
Mm-hmm.
It's two lots, so, um, I use it both combined.
Okay, well, the, the one that we're talking about now is the one that's owned by Verk Convenience Mart?
Yes.
Okay, you, you own the other one?
No, but I got, uh, I'm leasing both of them. It's not just one parking lot, it's two, it's 13 and 14. It's 12, I'm sorry, and 14, Franklin Street. It's two lot, two big lot.
But it's all on one property?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that's all I'm concerned about.
There's two separate properties, two separate leases.
Do we need...
Is that what he's saying? Are these two separate properties and owned by two separate people?
No.
Is this all Sanoco?
He owns, same, same owner.
He owns all of them?
Yes, uh, do you see the one that's outlined to you?
Yes.
In red? That's the one that he is leasing from the convenience store, that one that's next to that is the...
That's pretty big.
Okay, so you're...
The AMU Zion.
But, that's, okay, I got you.
Do you see the outline?
Okay. We're all, we're, we're good, okay, on, on that lot then, so, what else we have?
Just the, let's see, we have to set terms. We think that they obviously should coincide, I don't know if you want to make it a shorter term just to see how it works.
Uh, did you struck about the sign?
Which...
Got a sign proposed? Did you struck about that? No, we didn't. We want to put up a sign for the Franklin Street lot.
Yeah, it is not really much crowning.
Do you do that?
Yes.
Just add a number?
I would like, I would like to keep it one if it's not going to be hard.
It's better than what I would draw, let me tell you.
This sign already exists?
No.
Oh, so you're making it?
Yes. I, it's already also on a proportion. Right.
We'll leave that to staff? Is everybody okay with that? The sign? Okay.
Are you going to have, you're going to have a company make this sign, a sign company?
Yes.
Can you just, they're talking about having it come to staff?
I know that was coming, yes.
Submit a photo?
Yes, yes.
Hard to tell from your drawing here.
Yes, yes.
And another thing is when, I mean, I'm not in the vehicle repair business, and a concern of mine would be, as vehicles are parked on this other lot, or even on the lot on, on Broadway itself, that it, it doesn't become a junkyard. That's, I'm not saying that's, I'm not saying that's what you have going, that's not what I'm saying. But, you know, sometimes, you know, hey, can I put my car over there? And it goes in the back corner and it's forgotten about.
I'll charge you $25 if you leave it there.
Okay. I think we made a lot of progress here today, don't you?
Ten so, yes, we, we go in, we go in there.
So to recap?
Yeah, we're gonna recap. Well, let's, uh-
Have a good year, let's see.
All right. Let's do 685 first, what do you wanna?
Five years?
Five years, he says?
Man, man.
Boy. How about we do one on both for now? And then we'll come back, all right, see how things go, all right?
I like you.
Does that sound good by everybody here?
Sure.
All right. And, and we'll make it, well, you come back for both of them at the same time, all right?
Okay.
Is that good?
I'm good with them.
All right. All right, so with 685 Broadway, so we wanna recap for us on this?
For 685 Broadway, Board Policy Six, obviously, would stay in place, one-year term, the special permit, the food truck will be moved out to Broadway with permission of KPD, and at night will be moved to the Franklin Street lot.
Food truck is just removed from the premises. Where it goes has nothing to do with this board.
I'm good with that, we'll, we'll put it so that-
The plan is to, yeah.
That shouldn't be in the decision. Decision is food truck gets moved.
Okay. Just say that it's off premises, if not where, if you end up moving it somewhere else, or going to events, or whatever.
So the food truck will remain off-site? That'll be the condition?
Okay.
Okay, all right, so, um-
And the shed or trailer's allowed to stay?
Yes. And if we could reconfigure that shed to open up a couple more parking spots there, if you can do that? I don't know, can, is it, can you swing it around, or is it too long?
It's too long. Yeah, it's twenty by twenty.
All right. All right, so with item number five, the conditions that Sue just read, I will put that into the form of a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mary Jo Wiltshire, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Okay, now we're gonna go into the parking lot. So I knew he brought you here for a reason tonight, that was good, good. All right, item number six is the parking lot of 12-14 Franklin Street. You wanna recap for this, too, Sue? And this will be for a period of one year as well, that we-
This is type-two action as well.
Oh, I didn't read that into Seeker, did I? Jeez.
That's all right.
I'm usually pretty good about that. All right, so, under Seeker, this is, no further review of the board is required?
That there be no work performed on the site, that they provide staff with the state license for the sales and, that are gonna take place, and that signage that they want to install be reviewed and approved by staff, and Board Policy Six, Ten, Fourteen, Nineteen be incorporated.
And that it's temporary parking, like, no work done, but plus temporary parking?
Do we have a copy of the, do we need a copy of the agreement he has with, with Verk? Or no, does that already in our file, or do we, I don't even-
I think we already have a lease agreement, right?
Yes.
The other thing that I would add is reviewed by the zoning officer-
That it goes on there?
For the sales.
Because that square's gonna end up in the winter.
Because I think he had a bar-
Might as well just approve it.
-for the Broadway.
Do we wanna do that?
Because it's not gonna stand.
Okay. We talked about a variance for sales, but we'll have Eric.
Food truck, we're gonna agree to the food truck being on this site if they want? It's gotta go someplace.
If Broadway doesn't work out?
Well, Broadway's a street, so when it snows and the plows are going through, it's gotta get parked someplace. So presumably, it's gonna get parked on-site, and then as the snowbanks get bigger, they're gonna end up operating out of Franklin Street, so we might as well just-
Now I get, now I get what you're saying. So we're, what Robert is saying is that we would be allowing the food truck to operate on that site.
If they so choose.
I'm good with that.
I mean, we were allowing it to be operated on the other site, I don't know why it would be different.
Good?
Their option, they can operate anywheres, including that site.
Okay, so that's a yes, I'm gonna take that as a yes, okay? All right.
Okay.
That's part of this, the conditions, I'm gonna put that into the form of a motion. Do I have a second on that, to approve this?
Second.
Second by Kevin Roach. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Thank you, folks. All right, have a good evening. Okay, we're still in public hearings. Item number seven, 17-19 Abiel Street, special permit renewal to establish four residential units in an existing building, section block and lot is 56.43-3-21, secret determination zone RT, Ward Eight, it's also an heritage area. Paul Jankovitz is the applicant, HVK Consulting slash Corinne Carey are the owners. Is there anybody besides the owner or applicant wishing to speak on item number seven? Okay, but the record show that Mr. Jankovitz is here, how are you?
Okay, how are you?
Good. How are things there, good?
Things are very good. We took the building department through last week.
Okay.
We had a few minor items to, to address, and those were addressed, and the building department came back to verify, and they're happy with what we've done within the building.
Okay.
So as far as I know, we've identified and corrected all the open issues, and there were minor things, such as a fire extinguishers, some exit signage and so forth.
Okay. And it is currently rented, right?
It's, yes, it's, it's-
Anything else with the?
No.
Anything else from the board? Good. All right, under Seeker, it's a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required at this time. What about a term? Are we governed by a one-year on this, or can we?
It longer?
Department, so the board is reviewing it as a department.
But we're not bound by a one-year, we can, Robert, what do you think? Two, three? Two? Everybody good with two? Kevin?
Two would be fine.
Okay, unless it changes hands and they'll come back, right?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number seven for a period of two years, with all original conditions carried forward.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Do I have a second on that? Second by Robert Jacobson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number eight, 61 and 63-71 Hudson Street. It's a lot line revision of the lands of Y&amp;J Form LLC, and Jean C. Cowan. Hi there. Section block and lot is 56.42-4-37.110 and 56.42-4-40.110, zone RT, Ward Nine, Y&amp;J Form LLC. Is it Jean or Jean?
Jean.
Jean, see, I, Jean C. Cowan are the applicant's owners. Anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number eight? Did I pronounce that right, Mr. Cowan?
Cowan will be okay.
Okay. So I'm told that you wanna go from this to, back to where it used to be?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason is, I, I need parking lots for my, for my, for my building next door.
Okay.
And I usually like to keep at least two parking lots for each apartment, and so I'm taking from my personal house, the space.
And it conforms to zoning? We're good with that, right, Sue?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know if anybody wants to take a look at the map? And this is the house here, right? This is it?
Yeah, it's a photo from four years ago.
Which house is that?
This is my personal house, this is my building, the line is here, this is the parking lots, this is for two cars.
So this is where the line is now, but this is where you wanted to move it?
This is the line now, and I'm moving it here. Oh, no, no, sorry.
Lot line to be deleted, so this is the line now, and you're moving it closer to your house?
No, no, yes, exactly.
And this house has two family multi-
No, it's only one, me, my house.
It's only one unit?
One unit.
One family?
One family.
And it looks like it has parking for one car?
Two cars.
Two cars fit there?
This is two and two.
Yeah, so this fits for two?
Two cars, yeah.
And then this one would fit for two?
For two, and then there is a parking lot here.
And there's a parking lot here, for two. So you basically wanna create more parking for this multifamily?
Yes.
So instead of them parking on your house, they'll be parking on their own?
Yeah.
That makes sense. Okay. It's greeting parking on a difficult street, I'm good with it.
Yeah, the, the, the problem is the street is, is like this.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Chuck, you good with it? Any other questions? Okay, this is a type-two action under Seeker, so no further review of the board is required with that regard. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number eight, with all, there's no original conditions carried forward, this is, uh-
We will be written descriptions.
Yeah, we need Board Policy Six, written descriptions need to be provided, and what's this, filing with the county?
Filing, yes.
Okay. Okay, that's a motion, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Chuck Palaco, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're very kind, Norwalk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you need this? Or do you have one?
Yep.
All right, item number nine is a special permit to operate a seven-room boarding house, section block and lot is 56.26-6-21, secret determination, zone C3, Ward Five, Martin Mills and Erin Cattigan are the applicants, Imel Devannik is the owner. Uh, let's see here, is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number, item number nine? Come on up. You wanna go up to the podium with that?
No, I'm sure you can hear me.
Oh, well, the, the recorder can't hear you, that's, that's my concern.
Now, what do I do, ask questions before I know what they have to say?
No, are you, are you here to speak?
Yes, I'm the next-door neighbor.
Okay, well, I'd like you to make that green, turn that green, and then pull that right up, and you can state your name.
My name is Judith Petro, the owner of 422 Asbrook Avenue.
Okay, and go ahead, you can comment now.
Are you people going to be the owner of the property?
Aye.
Well, you, ma'am?
If it's approved, you'll be the owner.
Ma'am, you have to, you, address what your concerns are to us, and we'll-
How can I, I can't ask questions, how can I know what I'm talking about if I can't get an answer to my question?
Well, what are your concerns? And if there's a list of concerns, and we will, we will address them.
My concern would be an absentee landlord-
Okay.
-with all those people living in that house.
Okay.
But most of all, parking. Right now, I'm retired, and if I want two ladies for lunch, I couldn't have them, because there's no place to park.
Well, to, to talk about the parking, they're going for a parking variance with the Zoning Board of Appeals, so that-
Which means what?
There's another board that they have to appear before to, to talk about that. They're gonna, they're, am I right, you're, you're requesting a waiver for off-street parking for this? Is that correct?
Where would they off-street park?
They would not have to, they would not have to, they would have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals-
Yeah.
-to request that they don't have to park on-site. That's another board that they would have to appear before. And, and if we do approve this tonight, it would be contingent upon them getting that approval. So you can go speak before that board as well, okay? And you, you've probably been, you probably received a, a letter from the zoning board, from the zoning enforcement officer, informing you when and where the meeting will be.
So you're telling me I miss Jeopardy for nothing?
Aye.
So, but so-
Do you wanna speak to us?
We're happy to talk to you at any point.
Absolutely. We've always had good neighbors on that street, and I sincerely hope it continues. But parking is a problem, a severe problem.
We've spoken to Mindy about it.
And a good neighbor, Mindy.
Yes, and so we would plan on being good neighbors as well.
Thank you.
We're local, we live in Woodstock, so we're not that far away.
Okay, thank you. I know where Woodstock is.
And I'm sorry, did you recently sell a property in Woodstock, or did you recently purchase a property in Woodstock under?
All right, so Martin Mills and Erin Cattigan are here, right? That's who I made that part of the record?
That's us.
Okay, okay. All right, so go ahead with what your plan is here, we'll talk about. And, yeah, bring that microphone right up to you, too.
All right, so presently, the building has seven bedrooms, we would plan on leaving it the seven bedrooms. We don't have super-big plans for the next couple years, we would operate it as it's being operated. Right now, Mindy has six roommates, or tenants, however you wanna call it, living there, and she has a room to herself. We would replace her with an avatar of ourselves, an on-site resident responsible for kind of the house rules and the cleaning. We would be making weekly visits there to do further cleaning and make sure the house is upkept. You know, we plan on having rules set within the leases, as it were. I actually know Mindy through Project Hope, I was her mentor for the past year, and have been working with her for this building to help remove problem tenants and kind of put systems in place to make it profitable for herself, and to make sure that the tenants were kinda all above-board and not creating issues for each other. But ultimately, she's in her late 50s, and she owns two properties, and she does not really want to be responsible for two properties, you know? So I'm hoping that in the future, as we get the building going, I would like to appear before this board again. There is a third floor, it's an attic, I realize it's not livable because it is a wood-framed building, but I would like to explore the options of that becoming a space that can be turned into communal art studio space. I'm an artist myself and a designer, and I'd love to see the building become almost like a young artist co-op where there is affordable living with workspace for artists just getting started in their careers. That's my ultimate plan and hope for that building.
Well, if to, to utilize that space, you would have, I mean, your first stop would be going to Building Safety and say, hey, how can I make this happen, okay? And we'd be happy to, you know, if you can make that happen, happy to have you come back and amend your, your approval, all right? And as, Ms. Petro, right, you're just Petro? Yes. Operations like this, historically through Kingston, have always garnered concerns from neighbors, okay? So it's good that you, you exchange information with her, right? And, and so you always want to make sure that folks are happy who are, who are around these operations.
Right.
So, and you did say, I mean, you're, you're gonna have a person living on, on-site who's gonna be responsible for
Yes.
for the upkeep and making sure that folks adhere to the, the rules.
In conjunction with us.
Yeah.
I mean, we live 20 minutes away.
Okay.
And, you know, we do work for ourselves, basically. So we are available and have a lot of flexibility within our schedule, and the last thing we would ever be looking to do is creating, you know, a place in a neighborhood that is unsafe, or, you know, slumlordy, or anything else you want to term it.
Okay.
Can you speak to your experience?
Sure. Well, I grew up with parents who were landlords and owned a lot of properties. Where about what? 12 years ago, 13 years ago, 2008, 11 years ago, we looked for and bought a property in Bushwick, Brooklyn. We kept the current tenants that had been there, and then experienced changeover. It was a three-flat building. We fixed it up. We improved the apartments. We lived in the bottom floor. We lived there until we sold that building in 2013. And then at some point, we had bought Woodstock in 2012 and moved up in the summer of 2013 permanently. There's two small apartments on our property there, as well as the house. We, one was empty. One had a tenant in it, but we told him, you know, we were giving him over a two-year notice that we didn't really want someone living across the driveway from our kids, that we didn't really know. And those two units became short-term rental, and also places for family when they're visiting. And then I wrote a business plan and bought a derelict property that was like, basically abandoned and rent-infested, and went through the whole process in Woodstock to turn that into a four-unit, short-term rental that we ran for four and a half years. Never had any issues with the town, or problems, or...
And how do folks typically find out about, okay, I'm gonna, I want to come over, I want to live at 426 Hasbrook? How do we, how do you go about?
I mean, our plan for that, for long-term renters, would be, you know, word of mouth, for one. Local flyering and advertising, and any kind of local papers as rooms come up. If, you know, if I'm able to turn that building into kind of like a young artist co-op, then I would start, you know, marketing and speaking to people like that run O Positive and the local, you know, high school for kids leaving, you know, kids that have, you know, aspirations to be artists.
You have a tenant screening process?
We definitely would have a tenant screening process. Like I said, I helped Mindy set up kind of like some processes with which to be able to make sure people had references for past living situations, as well as current job.
And you will utilize regular city trash pickup? Is that, can they do it, yeah?
I think we were considering, depending on the volume, is hiring an outside company like
Okay.
Waste Management. I know that the apartment building next to it, three doors down, uses county waste. That's who we use in Woodstock.
For that number of rooms, that would be better.
That would trigger a private, that's why I was looking at you for, yeah, okay.
I think that, you know, within our, you know, our expenses, we figure county waste would be hired as opposed to using Kingston.
I, I do have a major concern with the congestion of this. I agree with the neighbor. That street has no parking, none. And it's, oh, I mean, you know, I can see it out my window every day, and I would be concerned in the winter with plowing especially. Especially if it's people that are only there month to month, and they might not necessarily know the, the regulations. That, that is, I know we're not voting on the parking, but that's, that is a major... I'm not sure that I agree that this is a good use for that.
Well, we would, uh...
I think it's too congested.
We could, it would be, it would be a condition of the approval if, you know, I know that we don't have a say in, in that per se, but I hear you. I do.
I have to say, if they got the waiver, I still would not agree. I still think it's too many, too many for that space. That I would disagree with them if they gave, if they got the variance. That's just my opinion.
You're looking at seven rooms. Is that one person per room? Are you looking?
Yes.
Currently, the, the property has people living in there as roommates. We're not looking to change too much as far as how many people live there currently. We are also doing as much diligence as we can to find alternative parking spaces for tenants who do have cars, as well as, you know, there are public parking, parking lots close to the property. The closest one's like 750 feet. The Jensen Avenue. And the hospital is open during the day, and it's always pretty empty across the street. There's a corner, it's like way where Jensen and sort of that three corners. So we, right where?
By Prince, off of Prince Street.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's...
The back side is on Prince.
The back side, yeah. And that parking, I drive by there twice a week. It's never full, so there's...
The parking is currently an issue, so... I know we have a lot of problems there with plowing and congestion.
So we would try to our best to find off-street parking available within...
I mean, that, that's, that's, I mean, like, in the winter, though, that's quite a ways for somebody to park and walk back to that house. So I'm not sure that they would avail themselves of that. I mean, that's, I mean, I can picture the distance. I mean, if, if it was like a major snowstorm, and I had to get my car off the street, and that's where I had to park, I would find that very difficult to park there and walk all the way back to that house. And just, that's just me.
And Mike, Dan, I have a question for you about that. If the Zoning Board of Appeals grants the waiver, the, grants their application, approves it, where does that leave us with? Can we deny an application because of the parking that has been already approved by?
It's still part of the site plan review. We still have authority, totally independent authority
Okay.
for waiver authority to say that this is not an appropriate use because there's not enough parking.
Even, even though they give them a variance?
They got a variance.
Even if they gave them a variance, you could say that you did not believe there was a good use for the site.
And we talked about the Monkey Joe parking lot. Is that within the distance?
No.
This outside of, okay. All right, I just wasn't clear on that.
Yeah, it's like 700.
Yes.
Yeah.
700 feet. 750.
I just wasn't sure if that was... Right. I just wasn't sure about if the, the Zoning Board of Appeals granted their application, approved it. Where does that leave us? Are we, do we even have a right to discuss the, the parking?
Are we tabling this until it goes through?
We can. That's certainly an option. Would you be in favor of tabling it this time, or waiting for, see how the zoning...
I'm okay either way, but, I mean, I don't know that my opinion will change, but
Okay.
I'm fine with tabling it.
Kevin?
I think we should table it until we get the parking.
Okay. All right, so...
You submitted the application, or I know we talked about it, but it, okay.
No, not yet.
Okay.
I think we thought we had to get approval from you and then go to them, but if you guys are saying we need to go to them, then...
All right, so I think we're, we're gonna incline to table this then, for, till we hear back from how they made out with zoning. So at this, thank you for your, your presentation tonight. Thank you for... So at this time, we're gonna make a motion that we table item number nine. Do I have a second? Second by Chuck Palaco.